The council meeting started. Make sure we're all good in the IT over there. Got the thumbs up. The meeting was already called to order as we began this evening with a closed session, but we will dispense with the roll call first, if we could do that.
Councilman Jindal.
Present.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rixby, he is here.
I believe he's not here. You need to speak into the microphone a little more.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
And Mayor Duper.
Present. Thank you very much. I'll ask the city attorney to report back on our closed session item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session on the two items indicated on the agenda and proceeded to discuss the items and direction was given to staff on both items. And I have nothing else to report on those tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now open with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would please join me.
And the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you draw your heads, please. Dear Father in heaven, thank you for bringing us together this evening to work on city business. And please guide and direct our thoughts and our actions. Please help what we do to be a benefit to all of our community members. Thank you, amen.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, I would like to delete item number three and four, please.
Okay. Okay, we'd like to invite the public, anyone wishing to speak on any non-agendized item to come forward, submit a card and come forward, anybody in the public wishing to do so, or anybody online can also do that by signaling in the chat option. I see nobody is doing either, so we will move on. If we come across any conflicts of interest, we will address those. Starting with eight scheduled and related items. First item, number one, a public hearing on council bill O dash two zero two two dash zero two, first reading and set second reading to amend the Loma Linda Municipal Code on Refuse Collection Recycling and Disposal. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, I invited our consultant, Mr. Lynn Merrill, to help me present this item. And each one of you have the PowerPoint presentation in front of you, and he will also go at the screen. So Lynn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Lynn Merrill and Lynn Merrill and associates. Tonight, we are going to be covering a mandatory organics collection ordinance. This ordinance is pretty significant when it comes to how we have dealt with solid waste operations in the state. It, as you may be aware, we did, we have had AB nine thirty-nine that has required us to do a lot of recycling programs. We have done eighteen twenty-six, which established mandatory.
Recycling. Thank you. I thought I was projecting, interestingly. We have the mandatory organics, commercial recycling. And then, as we have moved forward in the state, our legislative body has determined that the collection of organic wastes and mandated is an important element as far as climate control and climate mitigation. And so what we have here tonight are proposed revisions to your chapter eight twelve of your municipal code as it relates to solid waste. Integration, this is integrating SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the Short-lived Climate Pollutants Act, and it has requirements that include adoption of this mandatory ordinance. SB thirteen eighty-three was signed into law by Governor Brown in twenty, September twenty sixteen. It establishes a target to reduce statewide disposal of organics by fifty percent by twenty twenty and by seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-five. As you may recall, with AB nine thirty-nine and the other laws that had been passed, this is the next step to try to get us to a zero-waste world. And one critical element of this ordinance is that it establishes a target that not less than twenty percent of currently disposed edible food, I want to make sure that that's emphasized there, is recovered for human consumption by twenty twenty-five. And as I mentioned, it requires the city to adopt an enforceable ordinance to implement SB thirteen eighty-three. This ordinance was originally required to be in place by September, by January of this year. We are a little bit behind the curve, but we are catching up.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Requires city to adopt enforceable ordinance to implement, okay, so the city has to enforce this.
Yes, sir.
So I'm assuming this is another unfunded requirement from the state of California?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, just so you, I want you to hear the frustration in that, that I'm on several different committees and boards, and we keep getting this unfunded requirement business that in some cases isn't a huge deal. I don't even know how big a deal this is. I don't even know how we're going to enforce it, and I'm sure you're going to get into that. But there's nothing you can do about it, but if you can at least pass along to whoever may be interested.
Yes.
Unfunded requirements are an absolute headache for small municipalities like ours.
Well, to, not to get ahead on my presentation, but this does, this does and will impact solid waste rates. And that is how it actually gets funded. It also requires that we take action to do enforcement on those who may contaminate. So it's, it is very onerous. I'm not, I'm not a messenger from the state. I am here to work for the city to help you implement this element, but I firmly agree with you, sir, that this is pretty onerous. The procurement requirements and things like that that are being placed on the cities are beyond anything I've seen in twenty years of being involved in solid waste and recycling. And yes, so I understand the frustration. I actually sat through a presentation by Cal Recycles last year, and I could only get through about twenty minutes of it before I just, before I might have said something, I would have regretted. So I do understand and share your frustration with this. But unfortunately, this is one of those things where the state has adopted this requirement, and it places this on all of the jurisdictions. And so every city in the state of California and all the unincorporated areas of the county have this requirement. So you're not alone in your frustration.
Why did we fall behind?
I, I'll defer to the city manager on that.
Well, we have a draft, and then we have another draft, so it took a little while to get this, the wording and the language right.
And, and the only thing we fell to be behind on is the adoption of the ordinance, but we already had talked about this last year, and we already talked about the fee increase and the schedule and having CRNR do the
Yes.
The, what do you call it, lid flipping? Lid, right, there's a
Well, the, well, the proper term is auditing, but yes, that's what it boils down to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've already covered this, so I don't think we're in any negative position. We just had
Yes, and we have been, as a matter of fact, doing it. We have representative from CRNR who attend almost at every city council meeting. He can give me a backup information on that, how, how CRNR go about doing inspection and send out education information to the resident, to the apartment, so they've been doing a great job of supporting us with this SB eighteen eighty-three.
And, and one of the important elements is that the state right now is not focused on enforcing on the cities on SB thirteen eighty-three. They are still in the process of working on the mandatory commercial recycling, getting that in place, mandatory organics. So they're trying to finish one program before they actually step in and start another, another program here. So you're, you're, you're fine as far as, you know, the, the process of getting this ordinance in place. The state did adopt and develop a state model ordinance which serves as the basis for the revisions to your chapter eight twelve. It adds the following purpose, and your ordinance now adds the following purpose, requires the city of Loma Linda adopt and enforce an ordinance or enforceable mechanism to implement relevant provisions of SB thirteen eighty-three regulations. This ordinance will also help reduce food insecurity by requiring commercial edible food generators, which is a defined term, to arrange to have the maximum amount of their edible food that would otherwise be disposed, be recovered for human consumption. It bases, basically assumes that there is a lot of edible food that is being disposed of in the commercial sector that could be recovered and provided through food banks and other, other elements. Getting into the actual ordinance, section eighteen twelve oh thirty adds a significant number of new definitions to your ordinance. I, I believe it's almost about fifty new definitions relating to the various elements of SB thirteen eighty-three. Examples include a definition of a commercial edible food generator, what is considered to be excluded waste, food recovery service, and prohibited container contaminants. One of the key elements that is a new program is what is tier-one commercial edible food generator. So it defines two levels of food generators that this program will, will impact, and it includes supermarket grocery stores of ten thousand square feet or more, food service providers, food distributors, and wholesale food vendors. They will all be subject to the, the auspices of this ordinance. They are actually, under the tier-one program, we are, and I believe CRNR, from the work that I've done with them in another city, is already working to develop the food, edible food programs, and should be providing the city that information. This program has to be in place by, by this year. The second one, the tier-two commercial edible food generators, expands significantly into restaurants with two hundred and fifty seats or more than five thousand square feet, hotels with onsite food facilities and two hundred or more rooms, health facilities, specifically the Loma Linda Medical Center will fall under this. The hundred or more beds, large venues, large event, state agencies with cafeteria and local education facilities. And so all these are defined in the, in the ordinance. The first part of the ordinance revises and restrate, restates the following sections to update the city's solid waste ordinance. We did, went through and removed some archaic terms such as refuse and garbage. Those are no longer acceptable in the hierarchy. They still mean the same thing, and garbage is garbage, but they, they don't apply in this ordinance. So we did make significant changes, minor changes all through these sections from section eight twelve oh forty, collection fees through eight twelve one eighty. The city attorney and I worked on this the last couple of days to make sure that all of those, all of those language changes were appropriate. One of the key areas that we had to restructure was section eighteen twelve one eighty to include the new language for allowable waivers and the issuance of self-haul permits. Self-hauling basically is you, you take and load up your material in your truck and you drive it to the landfill. Under the SB thirteen eighty-three rubric, they basically recognize that this would be an off-ramp that would allow people to not comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. And so they provide three types of waivers that will be allowed. A de minimis waiver, which basically looks at each individual's business's generation, and if you are under or below that threshold, you can secure a waiver and you are not, you are not subject to the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three in the ordinance. Physical space waivers in the event that you have areas where typically this program installs or upgrades to three cart systems. You do have, already on your residential side, you have the three-cart program already. But in the commercial side, we now have to do the commingled recycling and the organics as well as the solid waste. And so in some cases, especially on older commercial buildings, you may not have the space to actually put these three containers. And so we can offer for those businesses a physical space waiver. And then the same thing as far as collection frequency, if it appears that you're variable in terms of your collections and, and don't need weekly service, we can offer that as a waiver. On the self-haul permit, as I said, they, they recognize that this, everybody and, everybody could come in and say, hey, I'm going to start self-hauling my wastes. It does require self-haulers to do the same thing as if they were participating in the program. So they have to source separate all recyclable materials and organic waste and to haul each separately to an appropriate facility. So instead of just being able to load it in and take it down to the San Timoteo landfill, it's going to have to be diverted either to a CRNR facility or an organics facility. So they can't get around it by, by trying to get a self-haul permit. The ordinance now adds new sections that are consistent with the model ordinance in SB thirteen eighty-three. It includes a revision to the requirements for single-family generators, and that is defined as up to five multifamily units is the way the state has defined that. It includes requirements for commercial businesses, requirements for commercial edible food generators. So it lays out the requirements that, that they participate in these food recovery programs. And also lays out the requirements for the food recovery organizations and services that will collect the food from these commercial edible food generators. And it sets up a significant administrative process that is under the responsibility of the city to ensure that it's being followed in this whole thing. It also includes requirements for haulers, facility operators, community composting operations. Typically, those won't be applicable unless somebody were to come in and, and propose some sort of a operation here to process your recyclables or process your organics. In addition, it requires compliance with Cal Green Recycling. Eighteen twelve two oh six, the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, they dovetailed the requirements for water conservation, water conservation into a requirement that you have to put a certain amount of organic materials such as compost or mulch on new construction. That's going to be a significant and interesting one. As a side note, the state actually determines how much organic material the city has to acquire in order for you to be in compliance. So it's not a matter of, well, we bought a bag of Topgrew, and that's, that's it. You actually have to track and report to the state the amount of organic materials that the city is acquiring. In some cases, in larger cities, it's a significant amount. I do know from conversations with City of Rancho Cucamonga, it is more than they can, they can actually use. And so they are in a position where they have to, you know, figure out how they're going to use this material on roadways and in parks and landscape maintenance districts. As I said, it's pretty onerous, the requirements in here.
I have to budget the money for next year to purchase the compost as part of this requirement. We, oh, we have providers, so we will buy it from them, and then we're going to give it out to the resident.
And, and as part of, and as part of that, we have to track all of that and report that to the state. That was the, I mentioned in my opening remarks that, that I attended a workshop. This was one of the elements that I just basically had to get off the call because it was just so onerous in terms of the reporting. It reminds me of going back to the way we started AB nine thirty-nine in that we were so detailed that we were doing cradle-to-grave on every piece of paper. Well, now we're doing cradle-to-grave on organics, and that's really where we're at. It does set procurement requirements for the city, and it also passes those requirements on to service providers and vendors. So if you have a landscape maintenance contractor who is performing work on your landscape maintenance districts, this requirement applies to them as well. Here's the fun one, eighteen twelve two oh eight, inspections and investigations by the city. CRNR will be conducting route audits, and we are required to inspect on a routine or regular basis all of your commercial businesses to ensure compliance. I am not sure how that actually is going to work in reality, because typically the hauler is conducting those things, but in order to conduct enforcement under your ordinance, you either have to empower the hauler to be able to act as your enforcement agent, or you have to coordinate and develop a program to get them to conduct the inspections and be able to document in case we have to take administrative penalties on the whole thing. And then the general penalty, the, the state in their wisdom decided that, that voluntary recycling wasn't getting there, and so there are penalties, enforcement penalties and things like that that are included in the ordinance that, again, it's the city's responsibility to enforce. I do know in the last year, Cal Recycle has shifted a lot of their staff from a local jurisdiction support to enforcement, and they are actually gearing up and expect cities to report on enforcement. So they can't say, well, we didn't have any violations. The state wants us to, you know, beat on everybody to get enforcement, and that's a, that's a sad part about this program, but it is, again, what the state has adopted. Next steps, if, if adopted, you will be, as part of your action tonight, you're conducting a first reading of the ordinance and setting a second reading. If you so adopt this ordinance, it should go into effect thirty days after the second reading. There will be things that will need to be changed in your existing franchise agreement. Staff is currently reviewing that and will be preparing an amendment. We will be working with CRNR to do this. And then that, we anticipate that that agreement should be brought back to council by no later than September twenty, twenty-two. As I mentioned, your, you know, this does not come without cost. The program requirements placed on CRNR and the program requirements on the city, there will be rate increases, unfortunately, to cover these costs. And with that, I think I'm open for any questions. You can also use me as a punching bag, if, if necessary, that's what consultants are used for.
I don't know if this was, if, if CRNR was going to do any presentation on top of this, no. I was just curious what, or if you're doing any enforcement or anything in other communities, and how that's shaping up, or, I don't know if you can talk about that, Milford, or not, but I was just curious.
I might be able to address some of it. I also work for City of Hemet, and CRNR is our hauler out there, and we work closely with them out there. I can tell you that most of the cities are not doing enforcement at this point. We are really truly into education and outreach at this. I know that some of the staff that we work with in Hemet, and I don't mean to take away your, your glory, Milford, but they, CRNR has been very, very good about, you know, getting these ordinances in place and getting all of these customers. You are particularly lucky, and I'll, I, I'm not getting paid to say this about CRNR, but you are particularly lucky because CRNR made an investment in the aerobic digestion system facility that they built out in Paris, and they anticipated all of this. And you are very much in a position where your waste is going to be handled appropriately under SB thirteen eighty-three. They will be able to get you the, the credits and everything like that as it moves forward, so.
Yeah, you actually beat me to it, because I was going to give them a plug also a couple of years ago.
My apology, Mayor.
No, it's okay. We, a couple of years ago, a few of us actually got to tour the anaerobic digestion facility, right? That's the technical term. And it's a, was the first, and was it North America at the time, or, yes? So, and I understand some of the other haulers now are starting to try to come on board and build some, but CRNR definitely has the kudos for being the first, and there was some really cool stuff, and it looks like Milford will, will come up and say something. We've goaded him into it.
I would like to volunteer, Milford, to do inspection for the neighborhood.
We'll, we'll give you an orange vest to wear.
First of all, let me say that was a very good presentation of thirteen eighty-three. This, along with AB five, in my opinion, are two worst pieces of legislation ever to come out of Sacramento. This, this is just unbelievable. This has, what is it, six, twelve, fourteen pages of definitions? Your twenty-six-page document has all of those pages of definitions, and it, it's just, it's amazing. Our anaerobic digestion facility in Paris is really important to how we provide this service to, to the city of Loma Linda, and it's going to be also provided to the city of Colton for the same, in the same way. But there are other facilities being built, but at this point in time, the ones that I'm aware of locally are only going to take green waste, not the combination. As you know, ours takes green waste, it takes, it takes limbs, it takes food waste, it takes food liquids also, which a, a major restaurant produces food liquids, your oils and so forth and so on. So our anaerobic digestion facility takes care of all of that, and I'm really happy to live in a town that is going to be, going to be taken care of that way. It's just my hometown, you know? Belin is here, and Belin has been involved in, in the fact that you're already beginning to do enforcement as far as the businesses and so forth relative to food waste. And if, Belin, you want to say a little bit about that? Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Belin Cordero. So what we have in place right now is, I'm your frontline, so I go out to the business, I talk to them, and I try to get them to comply. Most of the time, they comply. If they do not comply, then I send an email to Leonard or Julie, and then they send it to code enforcement, and then code enforcement pays them a visit attaching my information on that notice. Usually I get a call, it's like a ten-day notice to comply, and we haven't had anyone that's gotten a citation over it. They usually just call and comply. And so I think we're kind of going to do the same thing with residential, and we'll just continue that process. It seems to be working for us right now, but it's been happening for like a good year, and you guys are, you know, your commercial side, I'm happy to say you're doing really well. We actually even have your edible food recovery. You have three grocery stores, so it's kind of makes it easy. And so we know who's getting food, who's donating food, and we've, we, so we have all that information.
Belin also have housing in town.
Yeah.
Nice. All right, let's get to the bottom line. What's the cost?
We'll be at the next city council meeting.
Mayor, if I could, Loma Linda is a unique city, as you all are aware. I've been involved in various aspects of the solid waste operations here. We worked on getting you in compliance in AB nine thirty-nine many years ago, and your populace embraces And your populace embraces these kind of environmental programs. So you're hearing from CRNR, the staff. We saw that. We had, we had people in the senior center, I can't remember the name, Loma Linda Springs, I think, over on the west side, that were absolutely anxious to do the right things. And so I'm, I'm pretty confident that your city, while this is very onerous, and you heard my doom and gloom, your city is also very environmentally sensitive. And I doubt that you're going to have people coming here, you know, complaining about the program and complaining about it because they already are very sensitive to that.
I, I don't think we'll have people complain. You're absolutely right, complaining about the program per se because I think we have, we have very responsible and conscientious community members here. The challenge is the cost, as Dr. Daley brings up, and that's, and it's, it's always the increasing cost on every front. It's like death by a thousand cuts, it seems like. So, you know, a- all of this stuff is great, but at the end of the day, it, you know, we, none of us work for free. It's, it's hard, so. Any questions from the dice?
Yeah, just one question from my end. So I know we're not so much into enforcement right now, but in eight point twelve point two oh six, where we're talking about the model water-efficient landscaping ordinance requirements, it talks about how you need a minimum of three-inch layer of mulch, and then to provide habitat that's gonna be benefic- beneficial to insects up to five percent. In the future, is someone expected to go out and actually measure if someone's using three inches of mulch? Or how much land they're leaving for wildlife?
I think that's going to be something that'll be left up to the discretion of the, of the city as far as the actual enforcement. Typically, when you're doing landscape designs and landscape installations, there is a review process that, that, depending on the size of it, of course, there is a review process that goes through as far as how it's installed and everything like that. So I would expect that the, the city probably would not get to the level of going out and, you know, to a single-family residence and measuring the compost in their rose garden. I, it's gonna be more a discretion. Most ordinances that you deal with, and the city attorney will correct me if I'm, if I say something wrong here, most ordinances do require a level of administrative discretion. It's not an absolute. It's something that the city, you know, based on resources, based on the, the available staff, that you're not gonna get into that kind of detail. But if you're doing a new installation of landscaping on a housing project where it's a requirement, then your inspection would probably include whether or not that, that requirement has been met.
Yeah, I, I guess. My perplexity is that my academic background is in assessment, measurement, and statistics. How you're gonna be able to apply anything I learned over the last twenty years to this is a, a little beyond me, but I'm sure somebody in the state will try to figure that out, whether it makes any sense or not. And that's a cynical remark, but that's kinda the world I've lived in for most of my career, and, and, and this is looking a bit bizarre to me. But that's not my question. That's just a comment. My question is, a couple of us just went through an election where we're knocking on doors, visiting with Loma Linda community members, and they have questions, and they talk with us. My question to you is, I, I don't think I fully understand this. I, I think that the intent is good and honorable, but most of what you've said just kinda flew over me. And it's gonna take somebody with more expertise than I have to figure out how the city of Loma Linda is in compliance, let alone how much it costs. How are we supposed to communicate this to constituents in the city of Loma Linda so it makes some sense to them and they believe in it? Loma Linda citizens, I'm confident, as, as the mayor just reflected, wanna do the right thing, and I think the vast majority believe that there is such a thing as climate change, and we wanna do whatever we can to alleviate the impact of that. So I don't think that you're, we're gonna find any argument with the out, with the outcome. But how do you connect the dots over here to that? And that's our job as politicians now, is to be able to communicate this as a city council to the people that it could potentially impact. And I guess my, what I'm tempted to do is blow it off until it becomes a real problem through the enforcement arm of this, which I don't understand how that's gonna work. Then we're gonna have to try to explain what the penalties are and why we do this and everything. So I appreciate, you, you did a very nice job of, of, of laying out a very complex state law. I don't have a clue what I'm gonna tell my neighbors or how I'm gonna make sense of this. Is the state, or are you, or is anybody gonna help us with that kind of communication? Oh.
No, 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 not, not me.
We've got a volunteer.
Uh, uh, Belin, get up, get up, can explain. She has been doing it for the commercial, so she.
I'll give you my address, and I'll give you, and you march my neighborhood, and I'll let you know how it worked.
So a couple of things have already happened. One is you got the carts.
Can you, microphone?
You got the carts that say organic and recycling and trash. So now I'm basically doing road tripping, so Julia, myself, we will be at Stater Brothers, Walmart in front of City Hall. You guys are gonna see a lot of me. Anywhere you have community events, your senior center, your libraries, just talking to people. I've been at your chamber events, just repeating it over and over and over until it becomes a habit. If you go into Carl's Jr., if you go into McDonald's.
Costco. Most of my neighbors shop at Costco.
Costco. There's already three containers. So it's just gonna be habit. You're gonna see the three containers everywhere. You're gonna automatically know trash goes here, recycle goes here, organics go here. We've also sent out a notice. I've also been walking around at the HOAs. So give me time because I can only, it's hot out there. If you guys see me passed out on the side of the road, pick me up. But I've been just walking around, knocking on doors, visiting with people that walk. A lot of healthy people walk around in Loma Linda, so I've just been walking, talking, and just trying to get them on board and pass out the message of what goes what. And mostly everyone knows, I mean, organics is green waste and food waste. What people don't understand is that they think that you have to buy organic food to make it an organic material, but it's everything. Pizza, cheeseburgers, raw, cooked, fats, oils, grease, dairy.
So let me ask you the question that people like my wife are gonna ask. So if we buy a watermelon and slice it up, and we've got rind leftover, we usually just run it down, you know, we've got a commercial-grade garbage disposal, and that thing will eat anything up. Is she supposed to now throw that in the green trash can?
Well, we're not preventing you from putting your stuff in your garbage disposal, but if you're gonna throw it out, it has to go in the proper container.
As long as it doesn't go to the landfill is the key, right?
Right, and it can't go in your recycle container, so. So if you have it and you don't wanna shove it down your garbage disposal, walk it out and put it in your organic container with your green waste. And what I find handy is that, and I've been saying this at all my events, is when I, after I have my leftovers, I stick it in a little bag and I stick it in my freezer. And then I take it out on trash day, and I just tear my bag open and pop my cube into my green waste. And I haven't had any issues, and it's worked. So I do it. I know everyone else could do it.
There's, this can easily get way more complicated because there's talks about having little buckets that you transfer organics and, and move, and there's also talk about, what's the term I'm looking for? De- little bags that'll de- decompose, right? That, yeah, isn't, isn't there some like, there's a, there's a whole.
There is, but we.
Like an industry gonna be surrounding some of it.
There is, but we prefer no bags, and so it's easier just to pop it in restaurants.
The only challenge with that, though, the big pushback you get from people is, and literally, this is the way the law has been described. It's expected that when you don't finish everything on your plate, that you walk over to your green trash can and scrape it, right?
Right.
I, I, we don't wanna say that, but that's, that's really legitimately, that's what we're supposed to do. And so then people start thinking about how nasty and gross that green container's gonna be. If we, if, so, again, I'm taking this, we're gonna get off into the weeds here, but, I mean, in theory, all of this is, is, is great. It's just in practicality, it really takes some intention to really follow it.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a habit. I mean, eventually, we'll, we'll get it. If you just start practicing at home, you know, with a, even a little Tupperware container, just put your food scraps in there, and either stick it back in the refrigerator or freezer, and then take it out on your trash day. I promise you.
That's an interesting idea. I like the idea that you'd have to have a space in your freezer, though, so, uh, somebody might have to help me clean mine out, yeah. It's intention.
There are a couple of significant advantages because of the fact that you have decided to take organics to the anaerobic digestion facility. I don't know if you're aware of it, but there are two cities that are adjacent to you that require their citizens to put their organic waste in a bag and take it in their car and deliver it to a box. There are five locations in town where they take it and put it in. One is your amazing neighbor to the east. Grand Terrace is the same way. Except Grand Terrace, with, with Grand Terrace, they put it in a bag and then put it in the green waste. With the anaerobic digestion facility, it can all go together. And the other significant advantage of the anaerobic digestion facility is that you will have to spend, the city of Loma Linda will have to spend less money on procurement because everything that goes through that anaerobic digestion facility gives you credit.
Yeah, gets converted with the.
And it's credit against your procurement requirements. So it actually saves money that you would have to add more to your budget to cover that procurement that is covered by the anaerobic digestion facility. So it's, uh, this is a very complicated and very interest, the way the various jurisdictions have gone at it. But I think there's a significant advantage to the anaerobic digestion facility.
Last question from me is, is, uh, and I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't, and I'm confident I'm gonna be asked. So I'll ask you, and that is, what is the relationship between my watermelon rinds being handled this way and, and climate control? How is this helping the climate?
It's to prevent methane in the landfills.
The difference is whether it goes to the landfill or not. If it goes down your garbage disposal, then it's going to processing at your waste treatment plant.
So it's not, it's not a problem necessarily, but what the goal of this.
If it goes to the landfill.
The goal is to keep it out of the landfill, correct?
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you, Dr. Duber. I appreciate that.
Noah lost a lot about.
Your example is just exactly what I do with, with our food waste. When I, when I fix a watermelon, I'm the one in charge of that in my house. I have a, a lot of rind leftover. I just put it in a bag, and I take it out and dump the bag in my green waste with my, my lawn clippings and so forth. And every, every week it goes out, and it doesn't, it doesn't cause a problem.
We've been trying to keep up with the Harrisons in my house for a long time, so I've got another clue. Thank you. No, thank you. That was helpful.
Okay, so I think we have this set for first reading. We wanna proceed. We need a motion.
I move.
Okay, we have a first.
So we're approving Council Bill zero two zero two two dash zero two?
Yes, on the first reading.
Yeah.
It's a public hearing for the second reading.
Yes.
For September, I mean, for June twenty-eight.
Okay. Okay.
The motion is to introduce Council Bill O twenty twenty-two dash O two as the first reading and set a second reading for June twenty-eight to amend the Loma Linda Municipal Code, Chapter eight point twelve, refuse, collection, recycling, and disposal, and to include mandatory residential organic waste recycling as required by state bill, or, sorry, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Dan.
Aye.
And Mayor Duber?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll see this again in a couple of weeks. Moving on to item number two, public hearing to adopt new development impact fees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every five years, we have to do a development impact fee calculation. The last one we did was back in twenty fifteen.
Okay.
But due to COVID, we have a little delay, so this has been, uh, uh, seven years. And we have Mrs. Scott Thorpe, who we've been working with for how many years now? Many years.
More than I care to think about.
Yes, so, so he's back and, and to help us finish up this twenty twenty-two. And, and Scott will, because of, we have a new Councilman Jindal, he will go over the procedures on how to, he come up with this calculation and how to implement it. Scott?
I recognize a, a number of faces and a few new ones over the years because I believe we've been doing this close to twenty years. And, and this, this is just an update. It's, we're not creating any new fees, we're not creating any new land uses or anything like that. It's just, uh, we took the projects that were identified many years ago, and a few projects we picked up along the way with, with different updates, and we increased them by either the, the Engineering News Record Building Cost Index, which is, basically applies to above-ground structures, the Engineering News Record Cost Construction Index, which is ground level, pipes and down, or the CPI for vehicles and equipment and such like that. This time, we did change the land use database. We appreciate that. From your senior planner, put a lot of work into that, and it's very solid. So that changed a little bit of the dynamics because we picked up a lot of the housing out in the east of town that hadn't been there before. So it's just a, a good update of cost to recognize that over seven years, a bridge that used to cost X amount of dollars then is X times one point two now. So nothing new, but I would like to state, start with, do you have any questions? I think everybody knows what an impact fee is and what it does. And I feel very fortunate that after that discussion and the guilt we all now have about how we have to treat our waste, I'm merely asking you to adopt a, a, a report that will raise a third of a billion dollars in the city.
Are you gonna go over some of the basics?
Pardon me?
Are you gonna go over some of the impact fees and just like how they're, the definition of some of the charts that are on here? So one in particular I'm looking at is forty-one.
Page forty-one?
Yes, just hoping to get an understanding of how that chart works.
Okay, that's the circulation. Well, we have a, if I can get you to go to page, page forty-six. And this is Schedule four point two, local circulation impact fees. And you see a gray line about the middle of the horizontal page. Follow it across, and you see a figure of thirty-eight sixty-five per daily trip mile. Now, a single-family home is a single-family home. It generates about thirty-four point six trip miles a day. Pretty much the same for every home. That's an average. But for commercial, you've got quite a few different type of businesses that will generate different amounts. So this one can be used. So if you look back at forty-one, you'll see the second column from the right, the thirty-eight point six. the thirty-eight point six five per trip mile. And then it's multiplied by the various different types of business that one could expect in the city. So this is more, this is the only one that's, that has more specific data, and that's circulation.
So when we're talking about circulation, this is talking about how much are you using the different infrastructure, um, and in this one it's talking about like streets and whatever you're driving on basically, right?
I, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I think I understand your question, but could you repeat it please?
Definition of circulation.
Circulation is uh, vehicles on streets going lane miles.
Got it. So kinda going further on that one, circulation when we're talking about something like warehousing, why would that be lower than uh, an apartment, for example?
Well, one is by square foot and one is by a dwelling unit, so all the residential's are by dwelling unit and the others are by, I think by a thousand square feet.
Got it, so it's actually more?
Right, in the end it's more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're, a lot of us are fairly comfortable in the process, so I don't see any questions here. This is a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing, correct? Anyone wishing to run forward, Dick? No, no, not this one, okay. Seeing, seeing nobody coming, running down to the podium, I think we'll entertain a motion to move this. That's a question for the attorney, she looked like she nodded yes.
You can do it either way, separately or together.
Second.
We have a dueling second? Your choice.
So the um, the motion would be to adopt Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a resolution to establish the updated development impact fees applicable to new development in the, within Loma Linda based on the attached Development Impact Fee calculation update and nexus report pursuant to the Municipal Code thirty, or Chapter thirty dash uh, point three zero. And also to adopt Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-two dash thirty, an urgency resolution to establish the updated development impact fees immediately upon its approval. It shall become effective immediately and for thirty days unless extended by the City Council for an additional thirty days. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
And Mayor Duber?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, uh, we've deferred items three and four, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I, I would uh, like to pull item fourteen.
Okay.
And then I have a general question after other councilmen have commented on the whole thing, okay?
I had a question on the pet one, but I don't know what number that is.
It's nine B, moving animal services.
Thank you, yep, nine B.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Dr. Leonard, do you have any? Okay, whichever first you wanna take.
Okay, I, item nine B, I will ask Chief Hocker to answer that question, please.
Okay, so the question for this is um, from my understanding, we're going with Redlands and we've used City of San Bernardino before. If we wanna do something like that internally, would it be a significant cost to us?
Um, so that's just a correction on what you said there in the beginning, so we're actually leaving the city Redlands, going with the city of San Bernardino. So at one time we were with the city of San Bernardino, they um, had a, the uh, due to the city's financial problem, the city ran it, they were going to shut it down. That forced us to go over to the city of Redlands. Um, we had a contract with them, as you can see, that cost was around ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, the Fire Marshal did some reviewing since taking over animal control and found that the shelter in the city of San Bernardino was taken over by a nonprofit who has kept it open and running. And their fees are gonna be significantly lower, that'll put our estimated around twenty-one thousand. Um, we tried to work with Redlands to get a cost breakdown and they refused to give us anything, so we're going back to the city of San Bernardino to clarify that part. Um, as far as doing this, we really don't have any facilities for this, 'cause this is the, this isn't the uh, um, the catching of the animals, we do that. This is once we catch them, um, this is basically a kennel facility to put the animals and determine now the city of San Bernardino one, they're a, a non, um, I don't know the exact term, but it's a non-kill, so they're not gonna kill the animals, they keep them and they work on getting them adopted out and everything, so they could have animals for quite some time, so you'd need a pretty good facility, which you know, if it was me, I would like to, if we were gonna do it, have a facility where we weren't killing the animals when we got them. And so we, it would be quite an investment, I don't, I couldn't tell you the money right now, but um, getting the facility, staffing it, I'm putting all that work in, I would assume would probably be pretty significant compared to what we'd be paying here, probably definitely be over the twenty-one thousand dollars.
Got it, do you know how many cities use San Bernardino as well?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head who's using them, I think, I think because so many places left San Bernardino, um, I'm not sure how many have come back at this point.
I'll give you a little background and context on this. So if you remember several years ago, uh, they were in the newspapers and the media quite a bit for issues at the, at the shelter, and so what we're talking about is the actual physical building, like you said, the catching. Um, and there, there were just a bunch of concerns, uh, not only with, with just the way it was operated, but in the longevity, because there was talk about completely shutting it down, we actually looked at Riverside County. Um, and then there was some talk about whether or not we could actually do that with legality. So we were forced into uh, the, the, the relationship with Redlands, and not that Redlands is bad by any means, but it was significantly higher in cost. And we knew that going into it, we just didn't have an option. So um, like the Fire Chief said, that is now run by a completely nonprofit that's separate from the city, and so I think we're, we're on track, and as long as you guys recommend it, and I'm sure you did his homework, it sounds good to me.
Yeah, the Fire Marshal did quite a bit of research, tried to work quite a bit with the city of Redlands, and they were just unwilling, and talked quite a bit with um, the city, you know, not the city of San Bernardino, but the San Bernardino City Animal Shelter, and they were, they were very willing to work with us. Had some other options for um, services um, beyond this, which we felt, you know, added up a little bit more, that would be, you know, providing the actual um, animal control part, but since we already have that in-house and we're managing pretty well, this was kind of the service we felt could best serve us.
So the cost is gonna be one hundred and forty-one dollars per animal, am I reading that correct?
Correct.
If there is a downturn in the economy, um, do you think that number of animals that we have going out is gonna increase significantly? Like, would that impact our financial standing then?
Um, I mean, yeah, it's hard, it's hard to say, um, I think it says here, Redlands are average, our average impound was about hundred and fifty animals. So to say, you know, there's gonna be more animals out there, sure, you could, you could possibly say that. Um, but I think um, when we're looking compared to the, where we were planning the prepare and um, at a ninety-six thousand range and even higher, which way it was sounding from Redlands, and we're starting around twenty-one, um, even it goes up quite a bit, we're still quite a bit of savings from where we had been in the last few years. So I think we, I think we got a lot of room there to handle some more and still be in a savings area.
And, and let me add that when we impound the animals, the, the animal owners still have to come back and pay the fine. So the whole thing is not come out of the city pocket, so.
Good point, thank you, Jar.
Thank you.
Obviously, I, um, and I agree with the Fire Chief, um, that we wanna continue to monitor this and make sure they're, they're doing the appropriate things over there, um, 'cause I'm very pro-animal. Most animals in my head are more important than humans. So uh, we, we just need to make sure that it's all, you know, above board and all that.
Yes, absolutely, it, yeah, that's the one, when he, when the Fire Marshal first saw it, he was kinda like questioning it, really did a lot more research, talked to them quite a bit, made sure everything was exactly what they were explaining to them, and he did a lot, so I think at this point, we're very comfortable moving forward, but like, say it'll be something to keep on our radar, not just now, turn our backs to, but make sure it's being followed through exactly the way it seems to be sold to us.
Thank you. Number fourteen?
Number fourteen, okay, the first half of number fourteen, I think I understand. Uh, we're appropriating from the general fund, two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred to community development and parks. So that part's clear. And seventy-nine thousand five hundred from the water fund balance to water production account for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, to fill the positions of Community Development Director, Field Maintenance Technician and Utilities Maintenance Technician. So my question is, um, I assume we must already have some money in that water fund balance and water production account, and we're just adding to it, because I don't know how you, otherwise I don't know how you hire three positions on eighty thousand bucks.
Yes, we do already have the money.
So this is just a supplement?
Correct.
To enable us to meet the need that we have for these additional people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, the last, the, the overall question that I had is, when, when we're looking at all of these different items, what's the process? I assume there's some kind of built-in competition, so when we have somebody uh, you know, doing pest control or traffic signal maintenance and so forth, does that go out to bid every, every year or every three years, or how does that work?
Every three years.
Every three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we get those bids and then we make a judgment based on the bids that we've got?
The cost, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
We pick the lowest bidder.
Always, or do we look at their?
For, for, for this kind of services, yes, but professional services that are different, like engineering, planning, that's go by, by qualification.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you, I assume that was the case, I just wanted to be sure. I, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
And Adam Clerk?
The motion is um, to adopt the consent calendar items as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duber?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, moving on to old business, number item fifteen.
Okay, this is old business, so if you remember many years ago, the city used to have a redevelopment agency, which back in twenty twelve, the uh, the, the state decided to do away with RDA. And, and at twenty eighteen, the city approved the Grove at Loma Linda speak plan entitled, to entitle the property. And the Grove is, is the area, the project is right here, the one in rate, okay? So the, the project used to belong to RDA. And when the uh, the state is gonna get away, do away with, with RDA, the city have to either sell it or, or do something with it. And so what we did at that time was, we decided to try to entitle, do an entitlement on the projects. And then find the builders, uh, to build a project and then uh, get remaining money to go back to the successor agency, which is sort of sixth agency that will get that money. So, back in twenty-eight, September twenty eighteen, the city uh, approved the purchase and sale agreement for this seventy point eight-three acres, again, this, this area in rate, uh, between the city and High Point for the Grove. And on December twenty twenty, we also approved the executive negotiation agreement between the city and High Point. At that time, uh, as part of our agreement, we came up with community benefiting improvement. And what this does is that the builder will build all this improvement for us in the tune of thirteen point eight million dollars worth. And, and in addition to that, they will pay for the cost to prepare the specific plan for four hundred thousand dollars. And then the different, which, which is about one point five-two million dollar, went to the successor agency, okay? Out of the thirteen point eight, uh, uh, the priority number one was to build ten thousand square feet fully equipped community center, an estimate cost of three point nine-five million. A fire station, uh, two thousand five hundred square feet, at the estimates cost of two point nine-seven-five million, well, we, we forget M there, not two dollar and nice ninety-seven cents. And then we're gonna put in a new public parks, which is this, this green area here, for the estimated cost of six point oh-nine million. And the item number four is the oak wood land, which is this, this area right here, we are have existing oak trees there for the cost of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, okay? So we went through all that, and then um, so, as part of this communication, we have a lot of public hearing, a public meeting, and we have an interest from the group that would like to save the Adobe, the Frank Adobe House, which is on the north side of Mission Road. And so we have met with the High Point and, and asked that maybe we would like to include this house and the property and to fix the roof and fix the structure and, and replace some of the trees in the tune of three hundred and, and, I had to add the number, three hundred and some thousand dollar, to be part of community benefit this improvement, okay? The, the total cost is thirteen point eight. But now we have to include this structure in, into it, okay? Oh, right here, three hundred and seventy thousand. So, what we'd like to request tonight from the City Council is, is to approve that we amended the uh, purchase and sale agreement to include Frank Adobe House as part of community benefiting improvement. And the way we plan to do this is we set the priority, the priority number one is the, the community center, the priority number two is the fire station, the priority number three is the park, and number four is Adobe House. And if the money ran out, the last item will be this oak woodland park. They're still responsible for pay for park, the development impact fee, that the city could use that money to do the improvement in this area. In addition, uh, we also gonna pay them for eighty-five thousand, six and twelve dollar to reimburse, reimbursement them for, for the settlement that they have with the union as part of getting this project going.
So what's the advantage of, of asking them to do it versus us taking on that responsibility? Because that lessens their responsi- they're gonna, I'm assuming, take it out of that thirteen point eight million?
Right, right.
And, and does that conflict any other? My concern is that we've got them locked into an agreement.
Correct.
To build these amenities.
Correct.
And as we start to modify that agreement, do we lose control over original entitlement?
No, sir, no, sir, what's so nice of this agreement is I see, the city manager still have control over it. And, and in addition to that, they can do it cheaper than us, because they don't have to pay.
They're due prevailing wages.
The prevailing wage, yes.
I, I, the only, the only thing is that I, I know there's been some talk about how extensive um, this, this rehab on the Adobe's.
What's so nice about this, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 go ahead.
What's so nice about this is there will be an agreement between the High Point and two Canyon Conservancy, Conservancy, okay? He's supposed to be here, Mr. Pete D'Angelo is, is a, is a, is a. He's supposed to be here. Mister Pete D'Angelo is is a, is a, is a, is the president of Two Canyon Conservancy, who's gonna be taking this over. And and as soon as the High Point give them the structure, the the Two Canyon Conservancy will take care of everything, so we will get out of it. What's so nice about that is Mister Joe Frank is a member of this Two Canyon Conservancy, so he will be the one in charge of repairing this house.
Well, I I know how important it is to Mister Frank.
And and what's so nice about it is in the agreement between High Point and the Conservancy i- is that if they don't make it, or they decide to, they're not gonna make it, the property will come back to the city.
I don't know, something about me just tells me we shouldn't be messing with this agreement, because I feel like we need to hold, uh, this developer to their, to the original agreement, and and as soon as we start trying to make modifications, they're gonna come back and try to make modifications.
Right now, this house is already in in this property, is is.
It's down on the corner, yeah.
Yeah, it's for the, is is down here, it's down here. So it's already a part of this property.
Yeah. I I know the historical, and I'll just go on record, I know the historical significance, and I know how important it is to Mister Frank and like one or two other people in the community. But it's also been kind of talked about that it's gonna be this big, you know, school excursion for tours and all this other stuff, and I'm just not convinced that that's really the reality. So how much, how much are we, how much can we legitimately with our due, how do I say this, um, putting our fiduciary responsibility in mind here as a city to make sure we're doing the right thing for everybody and for the for the residents that live here, how much do we continue to put into that Adobe?
Because right now, if it up to the High Point, they can tear it down and and build houses here, because as part of the cost, three-hundred and and, um, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand is the lot.
Yeah.
The lot, just it's sold, the two lot is sold worth two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars.
Whatever happened to the idea of potentially moving that somewhere? Didn't we offer that?
It it they're gonna go, it's it's already coming apart, it's dirt, and and it's straw, you know, in the way they build it, it's a straw, and then they put dirt on the wall, so you can't really move it. Yes, we've been through this, and 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 that's why I I don't want to maintain it, if the Conservancy can maintain it, more power to them. They even proposed that the city own it and and rent them out, well, we can't do that, because as part of the, uh, the long-range property managed plan, the city cannot really take it back, they.
Got a, two questions. First, why did we decide to put this fourth, uh, in front of the woodland reserve? So it's number four out of the five CBI's, right?
Right, right.
Why did we decide to put this one in front of the woodland reserve?
Cause we might run out of money.
Yes. Is is that because as part of this development, the High Point have to pay the development impact fee for park?
Yep.
And the city can use that for this area. And and the cost for all of this, like ten thousand square feet, community center, or or the fire station, this cost estimate was done, I think it was three years ago.
So it's gonna be higher?
It's gonna be higher. That's why we kinda set the priority, so the first thing is you have to build this two building first, and and whatever left over, then we build this, and this, and this, and so forth.
So I get that, but my, I guess the question is, why is this more important than the woodland preserve?
Why? Really, because for me, I can build park, a- and I can do it, but but with the historical structures and and to deal with Mrs. Joe Frank and the Conservancy is a little more difficult, so so I prefer that that somebody take care of that than 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 the city, so.
But I mean, three-seventy K is a lot, right? Like, the park, which is like seven-hundred K, I think it was, whatever, uh, yeah, seven-hundred?
Right.
Like, I I'm just curious, like, I I understand that there are some, there's more people vocal about the Frank Adobe than the park, but I I don't think I quite understand why the park got bumped down.
I do wanna add that the historical commission and staff and the applicant did meet in December of twenty-twenty-one, and that was one of the recommendations um, of the historical commission, and they helped push it along with the Conservancy group. So working together with the applicant and and the commission and the Conservancy group, this was, um, what was outlined at the end for us to move forward with.
So if the park commission was more vocal, that woodland preserve would have been higher up?
That's a great point, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Related question, so, um, I I remember where we were originally gonna go with a actual water creek, um, but we went with a dry creek, cause it was
Yes.
cost-effective.
Yes.
How much would that difference have been? Is it over three-hundred K?
Oh, yes. It's the 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 cost, the main cost is not really to build it, it's to maintain it. It's it's a lot difficult to maintain the water features, then the lawn, they just mow the lawn, so that was a major reason why, and and yes.
Okay. I I guess I'm gonna go back to that, uh, previous question, sorry, Doctor Daly.
No.
If we're looking at the economic benefit, what would have more of an economic benefit? Would it be the Frank Adobe or that woodland preserve for our residents?
It it is not economics, really, it is.
Well, I think, I think the economic.
It's park, it's park.
Well, I think there's, there could be an argument to be made that the economic development would be in some of the businesses, restaurants, those types of things that we would wanna attract there, and they may be more attracted to, say, a water feature or a woodland preserve versus a, a, I don't know, it's a difficult question, because here we are, where, I mean, we're getting into some, th- this, these are the tough decisions, right? And we do have, we have somebody who's not a member of the community, but has been extremely vocal about this, um, and over the last several years to all of us, probably has spent a lot of your time.
Yes.
Staff time, uh, focused on that, um, and and nobody's arguing the historical significance, but it's.
This is Mister Frank?
Yes. The the challenge that I have is that is w- we, there's no question, we have to develop that area the best way we can, that's the survivability of our city in terms of our revenue. So we have to make the best decisions on how to get the right people and businesses and stuff over there, and, um, you know, I I just don't know, I don't know. I don't know if that I, I don't know how I feel, and if I feel comfortable making a decision on this, like, right now, without talking about it more.
Well, a- again, what we, what we ask is is for the city council to see if we can add this to to the CBI, and if you say no, then then it still belong to High Point, and the High Point can do two things, uh, uh, tear it down, build two lots, and and then, and then, and then if if Mister Frank or 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 Two Canyon Conservation can go talk to High Point, and he, they can just purchase the lot and the land from High Point direct, we get out of it.
Well, that almost seems like the, I mean, again, this is, this is more complex than we probably should be debating here, but it almost seems like they should be dealing with High Point, and I've tried to express that to him, we don't own that property.
No, we don't own it, right now, we're not.
But, yeah, we're the ones that catch all the brunt of his frustration.
We've been helping them maintain it, sir. We still water the the trees, we still doing the, uh, the repair of the roof, and and do the security. When the homeless went in, we put, we bought it up.
And and I'll, one, sorry, just one other thought, I've heard, whether or not it's true or not, that High Point, knowing that the cost of all these other amenities is going up, I've heard that they have been asking for some types of renegotiation on it, and that's my biggest concern here is that if we start to modify any agreements with them, it opens up the window to lose out on some of the other stuff.
And we did, and we did, we did, went through a lot of meeting, many meetings with them, and and just to come up to this, just one thing now, is is this, this.
To me, High Point is agreeing to this because they see some other benefit out of it, and I don't, I don't mean to be, you know what I mean, I'm just trying to be the best poker.
No, at this point, at this point, they just want to get the, uh, agreement and then get going with the projects, because July, what's it, what's the date again, did we plan to go to commission? Okay, on the July sixth, they plan to bring it, bring bring in the, uh.
Who's they?
High Point. High Point will bring in the project for the remaining, uh, there'll be a hundred and three-unit condo, the one they show you on the big map, and then fifty-one single-family homes projects.
Large lots.
Right, and they ready to bring it to the the planning commission on June the sixth, and bring it to the city council for review and approve on June, July twelve, I'm sorry, July twelfth. So what they want to do is is finish this agreement, and then move forward with the rest of their projects, so they can build houses.
I I have to concur, uh, at least on some of the issues that, uh, Councilman, uh, Jindal and and the mayor are raising. If this is such a priority project that we retain this Adobe place, how come nobody from the historical commission's here? How come Mister Frank is not here? And and, you know, it leaves us in a bit of a void, and the impression that I'm giving, so please correct me if I'm overstating something, but that this is the best deal we could strike, and so it's the expedient way to enable the developer to develop the rest of the project, is that right?
Yes.
So where are all the Adobe advocates? When, I'm not clear, I mean, if, if we can't move it, I understand that it's an engineering issue, and you're far more qualified than am I to assess engineering challenges, but it sounds like this place ought to be over in the historical park. I mean, i- isn't that the reason we wanna hang on to it, or Frank wants to hang on to it? And I don't even know who's on the historical commission anymore.
Which is, Joe Frank is one of them.
We've been talking with you, he hasn't talked with me, I don't know the guy.
Well, many emails, many phone calls, but most of it is from our previous encounters with him over the last several years, and and this isn't anything negative about him.
This is on the docket for today, where are the advocates?
Well, my.
Including the developer.
He he's, the the challenge with Mister Frank is that he thinks we should be doing way more for that building than we are, and we don't technically own it. And what I've tried to explain to him is is the jarbs even going way out of his way in helping him. Look at the nods, I mean, that we're, we're doing, we're doing stuff, because because he is making such, uh, um, I don't know, let me see. He he's making it, uh, an an important thing, and and so we've been doing stuff, but technically, we sold that to High Point, under the terms of the agreement, we sold with them. So I feel like they should be negotiating, but my concern also is, and this is where I'll get things probably thrown at me, is I just don't know if it's going to fit into the rest of everything that we've got going on over there, and I feel like we're at this this position where we have to make sure we're doing the right thing for the city, cause we're banking on some income and things to help everybody else in town.
What's the source of income if we keep the Frank House and make it a museum? Yeah.
See, what they plan to do, right now, there's a mission, is a songha. The house, the songha channel that that run along the peril to to the Mission Road, and and part of this Adobe House is gonna tie into the the trail, the the Songha Trail, that that can go all the way, you know, in this area, so. And the whole idea is by give it to the the Two Canyon Conservancy, we we just gonna.
Yeah, so let me ask you the existential question. If we decided tonight, no, we don't want the Frank House, we'll let, what is it, Hillsdale or Hill, what is it?
High Point.
Developer?
High Point.
High Point.
We'll let them do what they want, they bought it, they can do what they want with it.
Yes.
What what's the, what are the consequences to that kind of a decision?
Nothing to us. I I would think that then then, correct me if I'm wrong, then then I would think that the Two Can- that the Two Canyon Conservancy will communicate with with High Point direct. Again, the, uh, the city attorney, um, Mister Mark Hips, uh, he's, he worked for Diane.
I know Mark Hips.
Help, helped me a lot with this this, uh, agreement, and and so. So I would recommend that if you don't like this idea, we just deny it, and then let me work with the High Point on on bring back the, uh, what they plan to do, to do the condo, the a hundred-and-three-unit condo, the fifty-one-unit, uh, uh, single-family, and to the planning commission and to the city council, and then and let the High Point people talk to the the Two Canyon Conservancy themselves. And if they can have money to purchase the land and do the improvement in the tune of three-hundred-and-seventy, seventy thousand more power to them.
Fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this city, we're basically asking the residents of this city to foot, regardless of how you move the money around, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, so that Conservancy can get that Frank Adobe. That's using, that's basically using city money
Yes.
to get that.
To preserve the Adobe.
To preserve the Adobe. And and I, and I'll just go on record, my concern is if we modify anything with the High Point folks that messes up our our master plan there, so, maybe it doesn't.
The other question I have is, um, you just outlined a timetable
Yes.
when stuff starts happening.
Yes.
I'm uncomfortable that it feels like a developer's timetable is being imposed upon us over this Adobe House when I'm not sure how critical that is.
Well, to to.
Is that a fixed timetable?
No, no, to High Point.
Bulldozers there on?
Well, the.
They wanna sell houses, cause.
They wanna build houses, that's what they do, and and the longer they wait, the cost is going up, the interest is going up.
Yeah, yeah.
So so that's all, they just, they just want to hurry up and and build houses.
Now, the the property that's gonna be developed around this, are those the so-called more luxury independent homes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, this area right here, it's gonna be a a large lot, single-family down here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, I I don't wanna mix apples with oranges, but the last impression I had is the school we've talked so much about, that was theoretically gonna go up there, is potentially off the table.
I I heard, not confirmed, that that KB Home, uh, was going to talk to the school district, I think they already talked to school district to purchase this land, but the the problem is.
Did it wasn't, didn't they used to own that before?
No, uh, uh, Louis.
Oh, Louis, Louis, that's right.
Louis used to own this property, and the thing is, Louis called us and said, hey, by the way, I, we think that we have an agreement with the school district, so if they decide to sell it, they will have the right, the first right refusal, so I had to go back to them first before I go to the KB Home.
What a mess.
Louis would probably do a better job than KB.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen, what's his name, Dennis Lewis?
Are you, Doctor Daly, are you done?
Okay, the, uh, the 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 city attorney, because. Okay, does the, because there has been a lot of negotiation to get to this point, and and the city attorney, I can't call him city attorney, you are the city attorney.
Well.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, Mark Hips, uh, special counsel, has been assisting the city, there there have been a lot of negotiations with High Point, and, uh, discussions over the CBI's, and and it's not necessarily as as clear-cut, um, as we might think, so there's been extensive negotiations, and I think it would be a good idea to perhaps continue this to the next agenda on June twenty-eighth, so we can discuss it a little more, we we've received feedback from the council on this, and then make a, per- perhaps the same recommendation or a different recommendation, but get back to the council with more information.
I'm comfortable with that.
We want, we want to address this issue before the planning commission hears, takes on the project on July sixth, and then the council on July nine, but we do have an another meeting, June twenty-eighth.
I think that's good, Kansas.
Yes, and this way, uh, maybe the people from, uh, historical committee can attend, people from.
It's up to them if they were to show.
Yes, 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 I'm not gonna, it to do, it, uh, but I will let them know what's what's happened tonight, and, um, and then they can come on over and 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 sell it to you.
I'm gonna ask three questions before we move on.
Yes.
Can you go to the previous slide?
This one?
Uh, one more. Okay. Arborist tree replacement, I understand, re-roof and structural reinforcement. Arborist tree replacement, I understand, re-roof and structural reinforcement, I understand, additional lot contribution, which is the biggest piece, what is that?
Let me, can I take a stab at this? And this is, this is a little bit of my, my personal rub. It has been proposed that this is going to be a major place for schoolchildren and buses to come, and so what they want is a giant parking lot around it for people to visit. I have lived on Mission Road for a long time, right down the street. I have never seen ever a school bus or anybody visiting the adobe. And so I am just worried that we're selling this as a major historical attraction, and that's not the reality of it. I have no problem wanting to preserve history, but I think we're maybe getting a little into the weeds where we're gonna have a bunch of nice homes and other things going on around there, and then we're gonna have this attraction that people are guessing is gonna be this big draw right in the middle of it, and, and I just don't know that I see that. And that's where I figure people are gonna throw rocks at me, but.
Yes, and then the reason is, is expensive is not just one lot, they asked for two lots.
So is it asphalt or is it like buying the lot that's-
Right now it's just dirt.
No, no, like the two hundred and sixty-one thousand, how is that gonna be used?
It's just for the lot.
Their lots where they would potentially put homes.
Got it, so it's not even the material that's, we're buying part of the land.
So, so the cost to improve all of this site is gonna be a lot more than three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That, I, I, I don't know if Two Canyon Conservancy can, can afford to do it, so I'm-
So that's the other thing, they get all of a sudden in the middle of it and then it can't be completed and it becomes an eyesore.
Yes.
Ju- just help me understand the historical significance that has created this passion. I, I, I'm not being smart alike.
You have to ask Mr. Joe Frank, I, I, I can't answer that question.
Did he used to own this?
His family.
His family. That's why, that's why I call Frank
Frank adobe.
Adobe House.
Well, we're the first adobe in Loma Linda, right, that's why, or in the area.
Okay.
I don't know. Do, do, do you know? Here you go.
He's coming.
Does it have a historical designation? Is it a historical?
Not a, not a state or national, just a local. About time, Dick.
Thank you, Dick Wiley. First, you wanna know who's on the historic commission is one. Two, I didn't know about this really until about four-thirty. And I was going through the agenda, excuse me, and I saw it, and I pulled up what you were looking at. Uh, I think if we'd have known more about it, you'd add a lot more people here. To give you a little history, the Franks were involved with the gold transportation from beyond Arizona into here to Sacramento. They were charged with carrying the gold. So they built here. If you go out in the canyon where the schoolhouse is, that's Frank adobe or a Frank property out there. So this is all sort of tied in, this is part of the route that came from the desert from here through to Sacramento. That's why going back to when Deborah Waldorf was here, there was a lot of discussion about this historic district and exactly what was hoped to be done with it, which hasn't been. You started with the historic Mission Lights along Barton Road. That whole Mission area, historic district, was to be done that way. And it hasn't been. I was the one that proposed the design concept for where the Arco gas station is. Could we put some type of representation of some of the older original buildings on it? Which they did. This was what was also hoped for the rest of the Mission Historic District. Some type of historic concepts would be put in there. That hasn't been. So at this point, what was hoped for the adobe is that it could be turned into an educational place where we could have get-togethers and say, this is the history, this is what has been here, how it relates to the whole area. I don't know how many of you know that citrus from right here in this area was only what people in Japan wanted. That was how good the name was. And this is what, and I'm not gonna criticize people who haven't, growing up, have been involved here. This is what they don't know. This was long before Adventists ever got here. This is some of the first area of the citrus here. So I would hope that you have maybe looked at the total historic value of that, this whole area town and what you may be losing. Cause I know Joe had been here, I-
Well, I, I'm sure he would have been, and I'm sure-
Well, he's on vacation, I know that.
He'd have been very vocal. It's, it's a tough, it's such a tough thing, Dick, it really is. It's not a, it's not anything to be taken lightly. The, the challenge is, we just adopted a budget last month and our budget committee stood in front of us and said, we do not have unlimited resources. We are, we are, you know, we're, we're sucking the last fluid out of the, out of the bottom of the can and, and we're gonna have to figure out some things or we're not gonna be able to provide the services to our residents that we have to provide. And so, um, a lot of this is, was somewhat out of our control because of the RDA piece of it and all those other things that come into play here, but we have to make the best decisions with what we have, and I hate to say it's all economical, but especially going into this recession or whatever it is we're talking about, we do have to make some smart choices. So, I, I, you know, I don't know, I just don't know.
I wish that you were able to have gone back several years, at least a, a two years, to see what some of the conversation was about what historical thought might be done with this area. It hasn't been brought forward here.
Well, because it, it hasn't been our, it, it, trust me, I'm one of those people that Mr. Frank calls and that he writes to and that, and, and he's, he's often frustrated with. Um, and, but what I, I don't know that he's, I think he's spent a lot of time focusing on this has been a city responsibility to maintain this when it, it doesn't have that state recognition or federal recognition.
It's on the state register of historic places. Not as a-
I, I don't know that I, I don't-
You gotta put on there.
So, let me, let me do this, thank you, Dick. So, what, what I'd like to recommend is we can continue this to June twenty-eight, but keep in mind that, yes, we probably not gonna tear down this because it's part of the specific plan that required that we have to keep this building, but it can be, so, so, so it can, High Point can keep it, just the building and the lot that is sitting, but without have to give the additional lot for the parking lot or what they plan to do, or the, 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 I keep forgetting.
Two-
Two Canyon Conservancy can purchase it from, from High Point. Okay, so, so let's bring it back at the next city council meeting and hopefully by that time there'd be more historical, uh, uh, like Mr. Joe Frank, Mr. Pete Dangeman, uh, attend the meeting and, and, and. But, but- What I would like to do is I will continue to work with High Point so that come July the sixth, he could-
Well, I think we need to move forward with the development piece, that's, we gotta do that.
So we can do that, we can do that, and, and only with the exception of this two lot over here, he, he, it can be a lot still, so it'll be two separate lot. And either he give sale one to the Two Canyon Conservancy or two lot, two, two Canyon Conservancy between them and, and them.
Let's just bring it back and we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out when we bring it back.
But, but I wanna make sure that, I would like to move forward with the planning commission and, and on July twelve, bring it back to-
Councilmember Gindal has some questions.
Yes, sir.
So I know we're bringing this back, when we do bring it back, I'm a proponent that the city should be doing as much as it can to preserve our history, right? But when we bring it back, is it possible to have any kind of analysis of how much use it would be for each one of these CBIs?
What, what do you mean?
I'm looking for an analysis of like, hey, that woodland preserve, we're expecting one million visitors per year, and then for the Frank adobe, we're expecting whatever that amount is. Do we have anything in our studies or any studies at all for any of these CBIs? Does it have to be a question that we need answered right now if we do have something? If we can bring it back next time?
We have many workshops throughout this, this area D. And, and really the three main one that really the city council been pointing out over and over again is, is the, uh, the fire station, is the community, I'm sorry, this is community center, the fire station, and they want to preserve-
The woodland.
The oak wood, the oak trees, okay? Those are the three major items that, that we want to make sure that it get done. And then, but because we have a lot of land, we can have park that we can futur- in the future, we can expand for, for future buildings, uh, make, make this building bigger, make the fire station bigger, police station, whatever, we can have a path for the future facility that we can bring in the, the water lateral and sewer lateral into sight. So, but in the meantime, we don't know what it's gonna be yet, so we can have park.
Yeah, there, there's, there's so many things that we've, we've locked in. That's, remember, that's why we gave them the sweetheart deal with that sale is, and then the promise to basically build all this stuff. So I just wanna make sure we don't endanger anything there.
Correct.
Which comes to my third point. Is this any, by any chance, like a ploy to get that, again, I'm going back to that woodland preserve, get that woodland preserve knocked out in lieu of something that's cheaper to build? So we're saying we're gonna add this and then they do, do the Frank adobe, they do CBI number one, two, and three, and then all of a sudden they run out of money for number four. Like is that?
If anybody attacks those oak trees, there are some citizens in Loma Linda that will attack them with chainsaws.
That's why, that's why as part of-
But he, it, to me, it comes back to money. So what, what, what we're basically talking about here is the city subsidizing the Frank adobe getting transferred to this nonprofit. And I actually think there might be some legal issues with that using public funds for a nonprofit, potentially. So, we're, we're getting in the middle of a negotiation between the true property owner and, and this conservancy or whatever, that we don't even know what their financial stability is, to, and, and whether or not they can even fully develop it, whether it would be realistic. I, I don't know, I just, I'm just concerned we're getting in the middle of that and we jeopardize any of this other stuff. But we're, we're gonna continue it, I think there's plenty of opportunity offline to, to have conversations with the city manager.
To answer your question, I cannot give you the, the benefit for all of these three items by next meeting. And the reason I, I don't want to look into it because that was the council direction from very beginning as part of what need to be built.
Yeah, that's, that's what a community meeting is about, I don't think we wanna change any of that. He's not asking that, he's just asking to, to basically, to somewhat, some metric to prove that we would actually, people would actually visit if we created a visitor center there at the Frank adobe versus how many families are gonna go enjoy the park. I, I just don't know, I hate to say it, but we live in a different world now and I don't know that those things are the priorities of people.
But, but what's so nice about this is as part of this development, they have to pay a park development impact fee, that we could use that to do improvement to to this park and this park. So, let, let's bring it back at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, nothing there, reports of council members?
Not a report, but, but just to confirm, uh, when we met earlier, well, when we met last month, we were talking about water issues and questions that some of us have had from constituents about what's Loma Linda's water situation compared with Los Angeles because the television is all talking about LA. And, uh, so we had talked about you and working with Milford to bring whoever the razzle-dazzle expert is that can help explain that so that we can answer neighbors' questions.
Yes, I'd be happy to, ha- happy to do that, but we just had, he was in the meet, same meeting with me, we just had the groundwater conservation, uh, meeting yesterday, and my question to the water district was, how much water do we have in our Bunker Hill Basin? And his answer was, as of January twenty-twenty-two, we have eighty-three point five percent full. So we're doing pretty good, but in the meantime, yes, maybe in, in August, July, August, I, I'd be happy to bring him in and, and go over.
Is a hundred percent liquefaction, liquefaction though? So that's, that's-
Correct.
Is that, no? So a hundred percent full does not mean we're all, you know, you know-
Our houses are floats.
Okay, so that is. So we don't want it to be at a hundred percent.
We would be so, we should be so lucky right now, but we do have safeguards for that. Um, and, and that's watched very carefully because we don't wanna get into that liquefaction si- situation and, and the interchange, where the interchange is. There's, there is a fault that goes through there that literally creates our lake here. It holds our lake, it is the dam for the lake that's underneath us. And we have four point four million acre-feet of water now, and the Ukaipa Basin has two point two million acre-feet of water, and the Rialto Basin has one point seven million acre-feet of. So we have over seven million acre-feet of water in storage, which makes us one of the water-richest areas in the state. And we're, and this groundwater council that your city manager is staying very current on is extremely important because all of the fourteen jurisdictions that take water out of here are getting together and saying, alright, if we want to make sure that this stays at the certain level, so this year we're going to buy, we're gonna buy another twenty-six thousand acre-feet, or twenty-five million acre-feet of water, uh, as it's available from various sources. So we're keeping really, really tight on top of that.
Available for purchase or did all those places shut us off?
Pardon?
Is it still available for purchase or did?
No, it, no, it's, it, we're gonna get a little bit this year, probably five million acre-feet. But, uh, it, it is, uh, we do have some water in storage still up in the San Luis reservoir and, uh, another reservoir up there that, um, that we can go after when we, when we want to. But, um, this groundwater council, which was formed, is, is a marvelous organization because we have so many people working together as one group. We do need to conserve, however, we need to plead with our citizens to conserve outdoor green space and so forth is the highest single user of water. And, uh, and that, that really need people, we need to urge people to, to cut down on that and to transfer, to, uh, exchange that, the green belts for California drought-tolerant plants and so forth as much as we can.
So we'll get that set up because I've got multiple questions to ask, uh, but I don't think now's necessarily the time. I just wanna be sure that I know how to respond.
Jarvan and I know, um, he, he knows well, our director of water resources for, for the district and it's, his name is Bob Tenscher, he's a Redlands resident and he's a genius. And he can, he can basically tell you wherever drop of water is. And, and we're literally comfortable for the next thirty years. But we, but we have to be very conservative.
Probably in August because July we're gonna have full meetings and then maybe August or September, so. Probably in August because July we can have full meetings and then maybe August or September, so.
Okay.
Right.
Cause there is confusion out there right now.
Any other reports from council members? Reports of officers?
No, sir.
Okay, that adjourns our city council meeting. We'll move into the successor agency. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any uh anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come on down. Seeing nobody come down, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the only item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. You have a motion and a and a second? Dr. Daley, did you second it? I couldn't hear.
Oh, I moved it. Okay, a second, third, yeah.
Madam Clerk, your choice.
Um, the motion would be to approve the consent calendar items as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Daly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the successor agency agenda. Let's move into the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Move on to public comment. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll take the consent calendar here.
Move it.
First.
Was there a first?
Yes, we have a first.
Second?
And a second. All right. Madam Clerk?
The motion would be to approve the consent calendar item of the minutes from May ten. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Daly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes. Any reports of officers, chair member reports, seeing none, we will close that and we are done for the evening.